Rules or our needs regards whether they are violated in the rules. The individual will be provided a second warning. The individual continues to violate the public participation rule. And to not adhere to the directives of the second warning of law enforcement will be asked. Well, we would ask you just to cease the leak. And if he you have the public law enforcement. We we certainly, I mean, our board of education is interested in what people say. And one of the things that seems to be sometimes a little contentious is if a gavel is used. And from my observation, sometimes it's because the board might be having an understanding of the idea of the relevance of the comment. And at that point in time, rather than arguing whether it's relevant or not, just really focus on Chippewa Valley schools and what we do every day in our instructional program and get right back on track and we'll finish shortly. So with that, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, first Samantha Gilliard. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Samantha Gilliard and I am a member of Clinton Township Committee and I serve at the Ottawa Elementary. I am a PTO there and I am very active member of the community and in this whole district. And I am coming through the PTO month. I was very upset to hear about the approval of the danger order for the $60,000 approximately for the new PTO offices for the other two elementary schools. And I understand that it was because of the security measures for the new front offices for those two elementary schools. However, PTO offices are not a requirement in elementary schools. And I say that because at Ottawa, we don't have a PTO office. We have a little desk on our stage, which is used quite often in the school, as you can imagine, stages are. So to use almost $60,000 in funds that could be used in many other places within the district, especially at Ottawa, as you've heard a lot of times in this year, mentioned Ottawa needs a lot of things. I've written a few down, like caulk in our bathrooms. Our bathrooms smell like pee from 1980. Literally, if any of you would like to come into any of the bathrooms at the school, it smells like urine so bad. Also, our ventilation systems in the bathroom are not working effectively. So all the bathrooms are very stuffy. So the smell that's already in there is made worse just by the ventilation. Our cafeteria floor has so many chips missing out of it. Some of them are three feet long, some of them are two feet wide. I can send you many pictures of them. I mean, I think in total, there's probably 20 chips in total missing out of our floor. And I know that there's a few places of floor, and I think two rooms in our school this year are being replaced, but it's not enough. The wall door divider between our cafeteria and the gym is still not locking, which is a big security measure. Also, our staff workers, I believe, need to be paid more or something because they're currently swearing at our children, which is not acceptable. And so I think they need to be either paid more or something so that way that's not happening. There's just a lot going on. And I think that as much as I appreciate the board and all that you guys do for our district, the money could have been better used elsewhere. And I appreciate you guys and everything that you do. And I just wish that before some decisions were made, you guys could look into other things elsewhere. Thank you.
Hello, I am Erica Trawski. I also am a Clinton Township president and my children attend Ottawa Elementary School. I am here pretty much for the same reason. I'd go see the budget amendment. And I just thought to myself, wow, that's crazy because we out of operated for the last forever without a PTO office. And while I completely understand Sequoia and Shawnee need a new entrances to have secure entrances like we already have, I think to have an additional line out of, additional money being spent for construction of another PTO office is a little ridiculous. Obviously, Ottawa, we have kids that aren't even in our building. They're in a modular. I think funds could have been put in a better use here. We were told the modulars were going to be a two-year problem or a two-year solution. And now, I believe with the survey that's been being done throughout the district, which is greatly appreciated, now we're being told that this solution won't be thought about till next week. As an Ottawa parent, a long-term Ottawa parent who moved into this district to be a part of the district and we don't play now, I would like to see solutions happen slightly faster. We deserve better, our kids deserve better, our teachers deserve better. And if you need anywhere to spend those additional million-dollar funds, I know Ottawa needs a new fridge in our food service department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Brett Neeston.
Good evening, board. My name is Brett Neeston, Clinton Township, address 41362 Justin Drive, longtime resident and now my grandchildren attend Chippewa Valley Schools. I would like to point out the abysmal failure on one particular point of this school district, allowing pornographic material into the schools. That moral compass behind you, President Pearl, is not a good example of your leadership. I must conclude after all of our efforts that you support pornographic material in our schools. I'm going to read to you a definition from Clinton Township's ordinances. The definition of specified sexual activity. One, human genitals in a state of sexual stimulation or arousal. Two, an act of human masturbation, sexual intercourse, or sodomy. Three, fondling or other erotic touching of human genitals or the pubic region. P B is specified anatomical areas means the human male genital in a discernibly turgid state, even if completely or opaquely covered. Sir, obviously, you have materials of this kind in your school district. You've not denied that. No person shall knowingly no person shall knowingly sell, distribute, or import for the purpose of selling or distributing to a person under the age of 18 years any obscene, lewd, lascivious, or masochistic magazine, pamphlet, newspaper, story paper, writing paper, photographic record, picture drawing, photograph, motion picture, film, figure, image, or wire or tape recording of any written, printed, or recorded matter of a decent character which is distinguished or characterized by its emphasis on matters depicting, describing, or relating to specified sexual activities or specified anatomical areas as previously defined. Sir, this ordinance goes on in greater detail. You have to understand, we've come to this point because you have refused to address our concerns. We will have our concerns addressed.
My name is Walt. My grandchildren attend the public school system. As described in my previous evaluations of the procedure for reconsideration, I'll refer to it as the PFR, out of the 10 steps of the process, only one of the first seven steps specifies the time limit or constraint. Seven F stipulates that a reconsideration committee is to submit its written recommendation to the Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent of Educational Services with thirty school days, the first meeting. This translates into a minimum of six actual weeks. It excludes any additional time for holiday, vacation days, et cetera, which could add several more weeks to several, seven, seven F alone. There is no time constraint specified for any of the other steps prior to the committee's decision, which could result in several more additional weeks. However, there is an appeal, if there is an appeal, there is a specified up to additional 10 school days to appeal the decision, and then an additional 30 school days for the superintendent to review the appeal and respond. The bottom line is that effectively, there is no time limit specified for this process. Could be months before a final decision is actually ever made. About the only thing hard to fast regarding this whole procedure is the preamble which emphatically, emphatically states, no material in question shall be removed from circulation until a final decision has been made. All this time is going on, book in question is still in this library for children to be exposed to, right? So during the reconsideration process, which quite designed to take months, children remain exposed to potentially harmful material. This begs the question, is the procedure for evaluation, reconsideration trying to protect the children or the book? Think about that. Are you trying to protect the children here or the book? A reasonable response, this process should err on the side of caution with the best interest of the child being paramount, not the books. Renew harm to the child should be the standard. An objective evaluation of the current process would have to conclude that this is not the case. The reconsideration process misses the mark. It is an after-the-fact remedy where the children remain exposed to objectionable material indefinitely. The reconsideration process should also, also places undue and excessive requirements upon the parents. The procedure as outlines is daunting as well as endless. It could disturb parents from the, right from the jump. Parents are required to read every book in the library. Parents are required to perpetually monitor new books added to the library. Parents with children in more than one school or several grade levels are also required to monitor those. This is a toothless tiger. There is no definitive timeline or enforcement mechanism outlined in this procedure. Please reconsider this procedure. I have more to say next to me. My three minutes is up. Pay.
Hello, I'm Peter Kay from Clinton Township. According to U.S. News and All Reports, 2024 Best High Schools Ranking, Michigan is ranked 31st of 50. And only 25 Michigan schools ranked in the top five nationally. Tens of million dollars spent, I mean, waste on public education. Seems to me you and the big government and Lansing and Washington, D.C., missing the COVID pandemic. You missed the pandemic COVID budget. All those billions of billions of dollars were wasted every month and the past few years. And the fact, the fact of this spending, so-called education, re-education, we saw in the past few weeks. Even in Michigan, high schools, college students protesting against Israel, Jews, so many brainwash kids who know nothing about politics, geography, Middle East, Gaza, Israel, and war. Friendly reminder, war, the war is about the killing and destroying things. If you start the war, you have to pay consequences. So stop complaining. The best example, display of this stupidity was when the LGBTQ XYZ activists support Hamas terrorists. Please go to Gaza or any Muslim country and you see how your rights exist. You, board members, Mr. Roberts, every time talking about the holidays. Okay, so I want to remind you because you miss you. Month of May is a mental awareness health, very important because you see many sick people around. May 17, International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, and Transphobia. May 19, Gender Pride Day. May 22, Harvey Milk Day. May 25, Pansexual and Panromantic Awareness Day. Ronald Reagan once famously griped, the nine most terrific words in the English language are, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Too many children, too many parents are troubled these days. And to turn things around, we must stop looking outside the family for solutions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jerry Grant.
Topic today is a pursuit of happiness for our students. We all pursue happiness. It's the American dream. Declaration of Independence coined the phrase life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. No one intentionally wants to be unhappy. However, more depression, major depression is one of the most common mental disorders in the United States. Suicide is currently a leading cause of death among the young. Why? As a good counselor usually does, I committed to reading studies as of late and discovered a most recent thread among all of this research. Regarding groups of people, these studies indicate that people with traditional family values are happier than those that follow progressive ideologies. Let me repeat that. Regarding groups of people, these studies indicate that people with traditional family values are happier than those that follow progressive ideologies. CDC Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that teens following progressive lifestyles are at higher risk for depression, suicide, and substance abuse. A quote of CDC states, quote, LGBTQ plus teens are at greater risk for depression. If these studies are true, why are we introducing and propagating these progressive culture into our school system? Why do we propagate LGBTQ if it leads to more depression? Why do we inseminate our students with transgenderism if it leads to higher suicide rates? Why do we teach CRT concepts if it leads to more discouragement? The school culture is changing because of a few uninformed staff members who buy into this false narrative. The school culture is changing because of administrators who are afraid to stand up for traditional family values and who allow the progressive theories to enter our schools. Progressive ideology is an upside-down value system that harms our students, especially our marginalized students who are in, who, who see increased depression and suicide rates. Mr. President and the board, progressive culture does not provide lasting happiness. Studies prove that traditional family values are what's best for our students.
Next. Next speaker is Jason.
Hello, my name is Jason. I am a resident of Clinton Township and I am coming up here today to discuss bowling. The reason I'm reaching out to you today is one of my daughter's friends had mentioned to a group of girls that she did not believe in Christianity. Four girls started bullying her on the bus, saying she was going to go to hell because she's not a Christian. Now, when she got to school, she reported to her teacher. Her teacher reported to the principal. The principal then talked to the girls about that. My question is, are we reporting incidents like this to the parents? Or is this a school-by-school basis? The reason I ask is I just want to know in the future for my children, what they have to do to make sure if by some chance they're bullied, if by some chance they're bullied, how they have to go about getting this to be stopped? So my question is, is this throughout the whole school system that we have? If there is bullying going on, if it's being reported, are the children who are bullying other children, are their parents being informed? If you could find that out for me, I'd greatly appreciate it. Again, it's, it's unfortunate that we're seeing instances like this. My wife recently went to Ottawa to watch, to help with teacher appreciation. When she was there, she was able to observe the lunch hours. And it was insane, as she put it. I really do think that when COVID hit us, it really hit us hard because a lot of children are not able to see, or how should I put this, how they're supposed to act properly. And again, I think letting the parents know, it's a tough thing. I know we don't want to sit there and call the parents, hey, little Joey, didn't behave today, but it's repetitive. I think the parents need to know about this. I would like to know if my child is being a nuisance at school. I would like to know if my child is being a bully at school. These are things, again, I'd like to know, is this across the board? Is this at every school? And if there is a way to find a solution to have this fixed? I appreciate your time. I hope you have a lovely night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Melody Grant.
Good evening. My name is Melody Parent. We have lived in the Chippewa Valley School District for 46 years. I have five children and have attended five of the schools in the Chippewa Valley School District. I'm a public school teacher who taught for 42 years. Now, look at the time it took to make my introduction of myself. That took 15 seconds of my 180 seconds that I'm allotted to speak. Today, the average commercial is 15 to 30 seconds long. They are able to convey their message to sway you to purchase or utilize their service in that short amount of time because they have the ability to incorporate and utilize music, graphics, visuals, and their persuasive techniques along with their spoken words. You have taken those tools and those techniques away from us, telling us we can no longer have signs, printed messages on our clothing, posters with information on it to assist with our message. So it is very crucial that we are afforded all 180 seconds of our time clearly to convey the message we desire you to hear, especially since you reduced our time from five minutes to three minutes. As I stated in the beginning, after I identified myself, it took a little over 15 seconds to complete that task that you desire of us at these board meetings. And I kept track tonight, several people were in the same boat as me on the amount of seconds. So to respect your request that you make each meeting for us to identify ourselves, I am asking you to begin our time by beginning that clock after the task of requested introduction of ourselves is completed and we begin our talk or presentation that we want to convey to you. Identifying ourselves does provide credibility to the watching public in the Chippewa Valley that no longer can see who is speaking and removing us even from that visual from the community. Again, that visual information is also lacking there. So in conclusion, if you desire people to introduce themselves, then you need to start the timer when they begin their monologue. So I made this short today, but I really would encourage you to consider doing that if that's what you would like us to do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lillian.
It's very apparent this board refuses to properly function within the boundaries of its F or the Constitution. Based on your actions, you don't even know what your roles are. Superintendent Roberts is usurping the board president by running the meetings, colluding with your lawyer to create rules, specifying those rules at these meetings and preventing some board members from access to information. Mr. Roberts, you're only an advisor to this board. It's the board's job to run the meetings and create rules, not yours. This board is your boss. You need to stay in your own lane. The abysmal proficiency scores, skyrocketing rates of bullying, and discipline problems are all a reflection of your poor performance as superintendent. You're definitely not worth the almost $400,000 salary you're getting. Part of the problem might be how much time you spend posting on social media. I see you even made sure your posts were all on the front page of the school district's website. Speaking of social media, I told you at a previous meeting, Mr. Roberts, the Supreme Court ruled public officials can be sued for blocking users on social media if that official posts about state matters. You still have people blocked from your Twitter account. It's obvious you think rules and laws don't apply to you. Then there's Mr. Pearl, who is the board president, but has been replaced in every facet by the lawyer sitting next to him. Mr. Pearl, if you need a lawyer beside you whispering your ear and holding your hand during these meetings, then it's time to resign. You've essentially delegated all your responsibilities regarding these two, these meetings to two people who are not members of this board. It appears you're not only incapable of being president, but also afraid of the public commenters here, especially me. Mr. Pearl, why are you so intimidated by a child? After I handed you copies of the U.S. Constitution, you were so frightened, you set up a barricade so you would have a safe space. And you also moved the microphone for public comments to the back of the group as far away as possible from you. I don't question the efficacy of this board's void. He's allowing this board to violate multiple laws and the Constitution by gaslighting this board to believe public commenters at these meetings have limited First Amendment rights. In fact, the First Amendment guarantees our freedoms, including speech. The Constitution was written to restrain the government, not to restrain the people. I will end with a very relevant quote from C.S. Lewis, which states, "The greatest evils in the world will not be carried out by men with guns, but by men in suits sitting behind desks."
Next speaker is Leanne.
This board is not really
This board is not really listening to people's concerns at these meetings. At the April fifteenth meeting, I watched as Ms. Aquino and Mr. Sobas spent the majority of public comment time looking down at their phones or laptops. One of the few people who intently listened to all the speakers was your lawyer, but only so he could direct Mr. Pearl to gavel down commenters speaking about things he considered irrelevant. Then ironically, at the last meeting, Mr. Wade told the story of how his son's grades were suffering and how a teacher recommended he take his son's phone away before he left for school every day. Mr. Wade did as the teacher asked and was shocked when his son's grades drastically improved after about two months. This proves that electronics are extremely distracting and impede people's ability to listen and comprehend. So I recommend this board close their laptops and turn off their phones for the entirety of these meetings. I bet if that happened, this district would improve, just as the grades of Mr. Wade's son improved. Public comment time is allotted so that this board can listen to people's concerns. You can peruse through your Twitter, Grindr, and OnlyFans accounts on your own time. Next, many people are concerned with the decline in this district. You have so many problems, including very low proficiency scores. Multiple people disclose extensive information regarding student conduct problems, nefarious money trails, inappropriate curriculum and policies, and other problematic issues in this district. However, some people here continue to appraise this board at every meeting, which gives credence to the phrase, "There are none so blind as those who refuse to see." What the heck is there to praise? Yes, there are some great teachers, and yes, there are some students who manage to do well. Kudos to those people. However, the majority of kids are not proficient in math and/or English or reading. It's nice this board has some community outreach and five-dollar tickets for seniors, citizens, to attend school plays, and that's not helping kids effectively learn. What is this board actually doing to raise proficiency scores? What are you doing to combat the endless bullying and discipline problems? Is this district's money spent wisely and going towards projects it was allotted for? Every person in this district should be asking those questions. To ignore the obvious issues by heaping praise on this incompetent board is ridiculous. It's actually laughable, but also tragic, as every child deserves a proper education. One answer to effective change is to replace the superintendent and board with people who will make positive change and who won't put politics ahead of student success. Thank you.
I assure you, my name is Delora Paul. I'm a resident of Clinton Township. I'm a resident of Chippewa Valley School District. I am proud of my board. I am proud of the Chippewa Valley School District. And there are people in this room that purposely avoid the first part of this meeting. Because guess what they would see? They would see these wonderful students and all the accomplishments that the students of the Chippewa Valley School District have made. And they wouldn't be able to come up here and say the kind of actually defamatory things they're saying about my school board, and I'm angry about that. And I'm not blind, and I understand what's going on here, and it has nothing to do with the school board. And I'd like to know what the real agenda is of these people who come here, not knowing what they're talking about and accusing the board of things that cannot possibly be true. Thank you, board, for the hard work. I'm sorry you have to put up with some of the things you have to put up with. It's a tough job. But thank you for the work you do.
Thank you for your comments. And I don't think it's appropriate for the gentleman. Next speaker is one of the worst board members.
Um, number one, how many of you started, since we started the review process of some books? I wondered how many parents and families have opted out of the means of preparation.
Oh dear, wonder why?
I certainly, I'm sure there's someone that will follow up on Jason's request about parents being notified about a child being bullied or has bullied somebody actually. Assuming our bullying act is what we are in our processes, but I would appreciate follow-up. I'm wondering, is our, we have an Intercoated Dance Team coming in for recognition again this year. They won their national championship a second year in a row for dance.
At this time, we do not have them on the schedule.
Okay, I don't know.
They're pretty full. They're pretty full.
Yeah, okay, I think that would be a great thing to do, yeah. And the last thing is that there were some comments this evening regarding, uh, social media posts by our superintendent. I completely disagree with those statements that were made. I think that the social media posts and his ongoing presence in buildings makes him one of the best superintendents in the county and the state. When we, I went to award ceremonies for our high schools, and I've been on the board for many, many years. Um, Mr. Roberts gets rousing applause from the community of the students that are being recognized on those evenings, and that is because of his commitment to the students being in the buildings. And yes, I know the children love the social media posts, so if that connects with students, it all was connecting with kids. That's what I, thank you.
Which is illegal.
Yeah, why'd you block me? I can block the border.
Yeah, I think it's our time right now.
We the people.
What else on the board? I guess, um, I had an opportunity to, uh, last week, speak to the employee student council. Uh, and it was enlightening. They answered good questions. Uh, it was kind of a consistent theme that I've heard from a couple of other.
Guys blocking me on Twitter.
They want to have more connectivity to, like, having more of a voice with us as a school board. They would like to have more representation to the things that happen in the school. So, um, in our community, so this is all things are anecdotal, the conversations that I've had going to various events. So, uh, but I, it's a consistent theme that's coming from our high schools all the way down to middle schools. So, uh, I think that's something that we should probably be thinking about, trying to get over it. There's obviously things that we're trying to do to impact them, uh, specifically, so we should, uh, I want to be working on that too, board. Definitely like to have them come and be part of one of our meetings, be able to learn and see how this process works and how it should work. So, um, hopefully we can focus on that for the board. Um, another thing that I would mention was that, because I had to leave early at the last meeting, but one of the school board members had mentioned that we, the community, are marginalizing ninety-five percent of our students. And I guess I would like to have an opportunity to be able to ask, what was that? How are we doing that? So, I think Robert, you made that mention in the last meeting. Uh, I wanted to ask you, just, you know, here, if you made this statement publicly, I want to be able to ask the same question to you. How is the district, or how is this collective body marginalizing ninety-five percent of our students?
Well, first I can ask, is this the proper answer?
I mentioned it last.
Well, I'm talking to our board president.
You don't have to answer.
Well, I can answer. I'm just saying I don't want to get yelled at again for this isn't the proper place and time.
We're not going to get a little.
Okay. Well, I guess, the, first of all, I guess it's amazing that you say, again, that you've addressed our students, you've gone to our schools, and every time I do it, I'm attacked. But anyhow, by the definition of a marginalizing, I don't want to be able to look up the definition, because marginalizing means to put aside, treat differently. And that is what we are doing to ninety-five percent of our students. Not certain little groups, they're getting the special treatment. It is the majority of our students that are getting marginalized. Now, that explanation right there should be sufficient. If you don't understand, maybe you should look up the definition.
How are we marginalizing?
I just explained that. Look at the definition, and you would know.
How are we casting them aside?
By not giving them the same special treatment.
Who's receiving special treatment?
Dakota alone, during Pride Month, they have the pride flag. They get to have all these little safe space stickers. I don't see any of that for Christians or any other group, Indian, American Indian. Um, I don't see any of that celebrating for anything else. So those are marginalized students. When certain groups get preferential treatment, other groups don't.
These are student-led things. What are we doing?
Do you know the definition of marginal?
For a moment, I'm asking, I'm asking you, these are student-led components. I'm asking, what are we as a collective body as a.
I guess what I would have to ask first is I would have to request that you go look up the definition first.
Something to tell us which district is doing.
That is where you're missing the point. You don't know the definition.
No, the point is that you don't know what you're saying.
No, that's not.
And look up marginalized.
Same thing, just to try to be gaslighting.
Gaslighting.
You're trying to get attention. You're trying to get attention, okay? And that's okay. If you simply look up the definition of marginalized, you'll find out next week in order.
Thank you for sticking up, Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
I can hear what it sounds like.
Yes, both had to have Shannon look up marginalization.
That's his job.
Sometimes it's been spoken about, oh, we can't have marginalized LGBT people being mocked in this room. And who's being mocked?
There's your first one. Please sit down.
The truth needs to come out. The truth needs to come out. You don't want to hear it. None of you do, except one guy.
Please sit down. Is there anybody else on the board that hasn't come?
Yeah, I'd like to. We're not going to start without this thing. Okay, we're not going to. Back, calm down a little bit, Mr. Roberts. And I originally wanted to say is we're coming to the end of the year and.
Your better hold his hands.
A lot of things. We're coming to the end of the year and a lot of, first of all, we have a lot of graduating students. And, uh, I just want to say congratulations to all of our seniors. Uh, they're graduating. This is a big thing in their life. And I do believe a lot of our staff are moving there, very important to their life, and they do support that. Um, and I just wanted to say congratulations to all our seniors, all of our fifth graders that are moving on to middle schools, all of our students that are making these big changes. Congratulations and hope you have a good summer. Is there any other comments?
I think everyone else had commented about, um, I got to attend to make a difference. Um, award night at the ISD this past week, and one of our teachers was recognized by a student who the parents had submitted her name because, uh, her son was struggling all of a sudden in reading and was really, didn't want to read anymore, didn't want to go to school, was being very, very negative, was becoming depressed. And this teacher, uh, recognized that this student needed some special attention and some, um, trying to figure out what the problem was, and the teacher, um, got him the help he needed by through realizing that he may have a special need, you know, compared to other students. And so the, uh, parent wrote a really moving and, um, powerful, uh, nomination for this teacher. And it was really, really very nice that the parent, the family was there and the teacher and her family were there. It was really nice to say, we do have teachers every day that are putting there for our kids, so thank you.
Actually, yeah, I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention. Somebody talked about bullying on the bus, and just, I could just have a quick synopsis. An event like that took place, it's reported to the administrators at the school. Would they contact the parent? Someone like that?
Sure.
Okay. And I know somebody else mentioned about, uh, swearing at the students. And so that has been brought forward, or has anybody heard that yet? Somebody said at Iowa, the SAC student, the SAC leader.
Our administrators are, I think, are very good at determining the types of things that parents need to know about. So if it rises to a certain level, of course, parents are.
Um, and then also, I just, I just kind of want to make a general statement. You know, we, we have to come together as a group and, you know, I know. I know some people think differently, but we have to come together as people. That's, that's all I could say. I, I know I have different views on lifestyles, but I try to, try to walk a middle of the line just to try to accommodate other people. I don't think it's a good thing to play cage one group or another. I think we need to get along as a group. And unfortunately, that's not happening in today's society. And I personally think the more that we splinter off, the farther apart we get. Because growing up, we didn't have any of these problems. And now it seems like we've kind of splintered off in all these areas, and conflict is, it's constant. So, and I, I just think that's, that's a shame, because I think it puts a lot of pressure on young.
You could blame Obama for that.
Thank you. Okay, then move into one more.
So I just wanted to give a shout out to, um, the Dakota High School choir and the Chippewa Valley High School choir. I think I've got a feeling to see their coach in the past couple of weeks, and it's just, it's, it's amazing what, how talented the kids are in those programs. And, uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Dardis and Mr. Paydar at those schools. It was very, it was, uh, very entertaining.
I agree.
Here, we'll move into I M M executive session, A A to consider fair, personal evaluation.
Personal evaluation.
Oh, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gurras?
Yes.
Mr. Goito Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Sobas?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
I saw five here, I know. Pearl?
Yeah.
We're going into the second session at nine ten. Do we have any reviews on this here or any of this? Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Recording stopped.
No, my recorder's still going.
Mr. Roy, I'm sitting up there holding Pearl's hands. Think you better move back over here because the optics are real bad with you always holding his hand and whispering in his ear. You are really going to get the wrong impression.
Okay.
Okay. Ah.